Anyways, if anybody wants to record, please ask the permission of the school committee. We're starting tonight. So the first on the agenda is a student representative, Emily Jansen, for an update.
Hi. For starters, nice to see everyone again, even though Brendan and I saw you on my TV the other night. Congratulations on your Family Feud performance.
Thank you.
But I would like to start by talking about some positives as we are kind of back into the swing of things at school. So we actually just passed the halfway point of the first quarter already, so progress reports are out, and I believe the quarter ends at the end of October or so. October's kind of a big month for us, so we have pep rally and homecoming on the last week of October, so Student Council's kind of racing to get everything set up, including myself. And also, the seniors are planning a haunted house fundraiser this year, which is something we used to do in the past. We haven't done the past few years, so we're kind of bringing it back. The music department is hosting a trunk or treat on October 29th in the Stacy bus loop, so if you guys have kids and want to stop by, get some candy. And then right after, the orchestra is performing in their annual spooktacular Halloween concert at Memorial Hall. For sports, the girls soccer and girls field hockey teams are taking the ferry to Martha's Vineyard this Saturday to take on the vineyarders and get in some good team bonding. The homecoming football game is on October 30th, which is actually a Thursday, and we expect to see some teams reach the playoffs, but more on that next time. Next, I'd like to talk about some of the policy changes we implemented this school year. First one's pretty basic. We switched from paper towels to hand dryers in the bathrooms, and we also opened up another set of bathrooms in the language hallway to help save time, so students don't have to walk all the way across the school, which I have found very helpful. Next, we switched to a new method of running FLEX. So for those of you who don't know, FLEX is a free block that we have twice a week for mindfulness, extra study time, extra help. But this year, we implemented a new system to help FLEX become more controlled, so people are actually where they're supposed to be. And while it's still a work in progress, it's definitely been doing just that. And then the biggest change we made this year was the new cellphone policy. So as you may know, we have a new cellphone policy this year, so students have to put their cellphones in a cellphone holder upon entering a classroom, so they don't have it during class. And I actually asked some teachers and students to share some of their feedback, so I could share it with you. One teacher said that they found there is more class participation than before, and that the separation from the phones has made all the difference. Another teacher said that they see students interacting with each other more and with the teacher more, which is something they really value, and obviously, students are just less distracted. And I got a very similar response from the students as well. So one student said they find their classes to be more engaging and lively, including myself, and that they have connected with their peers more and even made new friends. Another student said they find themselves not using their phones as much during lunch, which is when we can use them, but they just don't feel as addicted to it. So all good things in that area. And then lastly, just some concerns bubbling around the school right now. The only major one is really regarding technology. We've had some issues with what's blocked and also some Wi-Fi problems the past few days, but it seems like those are already being taken care of and addressed. So other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Brendan?
Can you shed some light on the technology piece, like in terms of like what's blocked? Like, is it like tools that you need for?
Yeah, so I think the original intent was that we just block things that students shouldn't be looking at, but I think there's some things, some students have complained about especially YouTube videos being completely blocked, even if they're educational, even if it's like videos that teachers post for students to watch, and then they're blocked on Chromebooks and stuff. And also, just like images, when you go on Google and look up an image of an apple or something, and then a lot of them are blocked for no reason. So just stuff like that, but it seems like it's being worked on right now, so nothing too bad.
Thank you. Derek?
Thank you.
Chris?
No questions, but thank you very much for coming in to present. It's always very insightful.
Yeah, thanks for the update, especially on the cellphone policy, I think, for all this. We're very interested in that. So yeah, thank you for your time today.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Emily.
All right. Anybody here for invitation to speak? No. All right. Announcements, correspondence, distributions.
So we have some new artwork behind you from Woodland Elementary School, from Miss Du Arts Grade Three and Grade Four students. The Grade Three work is because students explored the concepts of warm and cool colors. They were a fall-themed art project. They painted leaves using warm colors and created backgrounds with cool colors, enhancing their understanding of color theory. Students were also introduced to the crayon resist technique, using oil pastels to outline their drawings and watercolors to paint over them, allowing the oil pastel lines to resist the paint and remain visible. In Grade Four, students revisited the differences between organic and geometric shapes and applied these knowledge by tracing real leaves, using step-by-step drawing guides or working from observation. Students were given creative freedom in how to approach their artwork. They could incorporate Z-tangle designs, patterns, make compositional choices, and select art materials based on their vision. This project encouraged artistic decision-making, creative expression, and a deep understanding of shape and design. So we have some great fall foliage behind us from the Grade Three and Grade Four students at Woodland.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have an announcement. Just for the folks watching at home, I sent home in the newsletter, I think it was last week, I'm looking to collect information from as many people in the community and families as I can, and hoping to set up one-on-one interviews with community members and families, our parents or guardians. Many people have taken me up on it. I am still looking for as many people as I can. I'm just, I'm interested to hear from the outside of what's going well and what we need to work on as a district. So please email me or call the office, and I'll set up an appointment, either face-to-face or we can talk on the phone or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Great. We're going to do the general chairperson update, so I'm happy to introduce James from Next Level. He's the OPM that the Building Committee has chosen and the MSBA has approved, so he is formerly our project manager for the new high school. So what we're going to do is actually turn it over to him to give a kind of a quick update and tell us where we're at, what he does, and get some excitement going.
Thank you, guys. Glad to be here. Nice meeting everyone. Yesterday, we had, well, let me say it, Monday, we had the MSBA OPM panel review, and we officially signed the contract at yesterday's school building committee. And so Mike invited me here to share with the school committee as well. So this will be a little bit of a rehash of what, this should also be a little bit of, give you a sense of what we talk about at the school building meetings. So if you want to just go to next slide. But first off, just to introduce myself and my team, you know, I'll be the project director. I'll be the day-to-day with them. You'll also see Suresh Batia, as he'll be the project advisor on the project. He's has, you know, three other core, MSBA core projects ongoing. And I note that because the MSBA is an incredibly, well, it's a complex process, many steps, and it's, and in some way, you know, while it's somewhat steady, it does evolve. And so it's just, it's just nice to have like, you know, he's just like three steps ahead of us. And, oh, what'd you do here? Okay, great. And so, you know, it'll make us much more efficient when we, when our project goes through at that point. And then, and if you want to just go to the next slide, thank you. One of the things that I think is helpful is just that you know my past experience. So at a prior firm, I was the project manager of the Woodland Elementary School project. So I know, I knew a couple, you know, Patrick Collins was on the school building committee, Jonathan Bruce obviously was, and so it's very good to, and Melissa and Craig was also there. So it's good to see, it's good to see a lot of familiar faces, almost 10 years later, almost. In terms of projects similar in size and scope to Milford High School, you know, I've worked on Greater Little Tech, and I mentioned that it's a vocational school, especially with the idea of us considering nine vocational programs into the new, into the new high school. Revere High School, I mentioned because it is, you guys, the potential designer room, it's going to be quite large, larger than what it is now, if, you know, if we go eight to 12, and, you know, and then just also including the VOTAC. So, and then lastly, I put Agawam in there because it was also an addition renovation where they were keeping existing parts of their campus, you know, the gym and the auditorium. And you guys are one of the few that have a pool. And so, a brief aside, you know, the MSBA is strict on what it funds and doesn't fund, and one of the lines that it doesn't cross is, you know, they try to focus solely on academics. They really do. And, and so, but if you wanted to include, you can't include a pool as part of your project. So you guys are grandfathered in, obviously, and we can make repairs to it and whatnot. And so, at any rate, it's good stuff. Next slide. I just heard recently, I'm going to have to borrow, but you know, it's, the MSBA is a little bit of like a marathon. And we, you know, you guys, I think, put in your statement of interest January of 2023. You got accepted in December of 2023. You're in an eligibility phase where, you know, that lasted all the way until June of 2025, and, and so, and then now, and then the OPM process. And so now we're here with me. And, and next step, so we're the part where it's like forming, that's module one, eligibility period, and module two. If you want to go to the next slide as well, as a little more clear of what's completed and what's ongoing. And so, our next step is now to procure the designer for the project. And then after that, we'll have feasibility study. That's going to be about a 20-month process, starting from now. We anticipate it to be done around spring of 2027. And then we will, it'll get approved by the MS, well, you know, it'll get reviewed and approved by the MSBA, and then we will then continue on with the rest of the design, and then bidding and construction. And, you know, if all things goes well, we're looking for, you know, a fall of 2030, 2020, sorry, 2029. Thank you. And, so next slide, please. So I'm going to take a few moments to go over the next steps of, and, and our next steps in our process is procuring the designer. It is a little bit different from the OPM selection, because now you have me on board, and the OPM selection was primarily on the district. You know, you went out and procured us, and the MSBA did a review, but ultimately it was, they approved the selection. Designer selection is a little bit different, or a lot, where in, in public procurement, the designer is typically, has to go in front of the Massachusetts Designer Selection Board for it to be selected. The MSBA has chosen to have their own designer selection panel, and they've gotten, they've gone, they've gotten, they were granted that. And so it's just kind of like a subset, I guess, but it is, you can go to next slide, actually. Thank you. Yeah, and there we go. And next slide. It is made up of, it's typically made up of 13 members, although when you go to their website, there's 18 listed there. But I think they have, it's pretty much alternates. And so, it's made up of 13 members on their side, and then three members on our side, on the district side. And those members is, one shall be representative of the school committee, one of the superintendent or his designee, and then one by the CEO of the town or their designee. And that could be either in this, in this area, Rick or Mike Walsh, you know, select board or the town administrator. So, yep, next slide. And that's, that's the list of who the other 18 members are, you know, and I think some of them are alternates, but many are, you know, many are MSBA, and they, and they also list their, you know, like ones like Rachel is a professional engineer, you'll have registered architects, the Building Trades Council designee, the construction management, I believe, is, you know, Associated General Contractors is there. So just to give you a flavor of who's on this board. Next slide, please. Yeah. So the process is, you know, we have to give public notice, just like we do for typical procurement, you know, and it's going to central register, and then it goes out to everyone. The designers are all, also have to have a master file brochure with the state, and all of the architects that would be applying for this, this is par for the course. Next slide. Typically, I'll just go into that, you know, the, so, you know, go to next slide, or we're just going to go, yeah, there we go. Well, so we're going to, I'm, I am in the process of writing the RFS. It will get reviewed by the MSBA, and I have a schedule at the end that I'll go with all the details, but, the dates. The MSBA will review it, they'll kick it back to us, we'll put in the central register, we'll get submissions back. I will share those submissions with the school building committee, and once we get those, we are allowed to review them, but the MSBA is very specific, we're not allowed to break. So, just, just an interesting point. So you can review, you can make comments, but they do not want rankings. And the rankings will occur at the actual designer selection panel meeting, and we are aiming for January 12th for that first meeting. And so at that point, all the submissions will be reviewed by all 16 members, you know, 13 of them, three of us, and then will be basically a Q and A or comments after each one, where the district will be able to provide comments on each submission, and kind of give their, give their opinion, you know, of each, of each submission, you know. And so, and that, then that'll be scored, you know, basically first would be three points, second will be two, third will be one, and whoever has the highest scores amongst the, say there's 10 submissions, you know, those will be ranked to the top three. Two weeks later, then, there would be an interview, and then, so those three would interview, and then we would, again, have another, at that, at that process, at that meeting, we would also have another Q and A, and then finally, there'd be the other scoring, and then we would, we would have our designer at that point. So, yeah, next slide. Next slide. Yeah, that's basically for the approval. And there's the schedule, as I just discussed, you know, the, the, October 30th is the RFS is due. We place the ad in the central register. It'll come out November 19th, and the applications we do December 17th, and then we would turn around and provide those to the MSBA and their selection panel on December 26th. And by the way, all these dates are from the MSBA, so just to let you know the type of process that's getting run here. We, we're along for the ride, if you will, in some ways. And so, and then, application review is the 13th, and then the interviews should be at the next, the following time they meet, on the 27th. So I think, I don't know, I'd love to open up if you have any questions on that.
Questions? Want to start with Brendan?
Seems like it's kind of like straightforward in a sense, but it's good to see you, so I appreciate you reviewing it with us, and I'm looking forward to the next few years working with you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you.
Obviously, it's very professional. It's intense, and it's, and it's, you're in the pipeline, so.
That's right. That's right. And that's the goal, is that we're just going to keep you moving to the MSBA states and keep the project moving throughout. I think if you will go to our next slide, we will be using, this is primarily for the school building committee. We can, we can have a discussion there, I think, on who we'd like to invite, if we want additional school committee meeting members, you know, to have access to this information or not, you know. But, so, all those submissions, for example, we don't want to have them buried in your email, or, you know, so you'll, they'd be able to come here and to review that. And then, if you don't mind, next slide. And this is just an example of the agenda that, just to give you a flavor of what we go at the meetings, you know, they will have the approval of the minutes, the approval of the warrant, our project budget is what it will be at that moment. This was our first meeting. And then, so I'll give the present, a short presentation on the project budget and the invoices, how they're impacting the budget, things like that. And then, any, any specific items? And then, and then, yeah, that's, and that's, oh, and then, school committee update, we'll actually have one of those in there. And I mentioned that, just like here, I want to start off with this PSA, if you don't mind. This truly is, you know, it takes a village, and it takes a village in terms of all of the committees in town that are, that are going to be working on this. So while I am primarily working with the school building committee, that school building committee has, Chris, has Mike, has Craig, on the school committee, and, you know, we're really relying on you to get them, the last thing we want is the school committee saying, this is the first time we've heard about this, or FinCon, or, you know, which has a representative on the school building committee, or the select board. And so, so that is our goal, is that the message will go out. I can certainly provide periodic updates as well as needed, just like, you know, not, not just like today, but just like today. And, and so, I think that was it. That was the last slide. So, yeah, thank you.
Chris?
No questions. Thanks again. I heard this last night, so.
Yeah.
Looking forward to the process.
The date, this goes in front of town meeting.
Yes.
Share that with the committee, because I found that kind of fascinating.
Yes. Okay, yeah. The MSBA is an interesting process where they have the, they have you go through feasibility, where you have many options to look at. I'm sorry, we have three options, three major options we're going to look at, and this is all required by the MSBA. And one is, they call it a code upgrade, where it's basically building, perfect as it is size-wise, and we're just upgrading the plumbing, electrical, making it up to code, perfect size-wise and educational program-wise. So it is really a theoretical option, but it's just a good baseline to see, okay, how bad is this building, you know? What do we need, what is, what would it take if we, if we didn't have to change it? If it fit our programmatic needs perfectly, we would still need to do X, Y, and Z from a physical standpoint. Then they, then we have the option to study addition renovations, which that can be one to 10, you know, whatever. And then there's new construction, which is one to 10. And it sounds like a lot, but it's, in reality, it's really necessary for such an expenditure, if you want to look at it that way, and when we're asking so much of a town and its constituents. You know, they want to know that we looked under every rock and stone to see, you know, that, that this is the, truly the best option for us, you know, both educationally, financially, you know, all the above.
So the, what shocked me is that we see the map and where we're at.
Yes.
And we're going to be voting at town meeting in May 2027.
Yes, yes.
Less than two years.
That's right.
So like, that map looks like it's far away, but the, the front part, the front-loaded is taking a lot longer, but now things start to really dial up. And James told me, hey, we're voting on this in May 2027. I was like, wow, that's, that's less than two years. That's actually pretty aggressive. So this is going to heat up pretty quick. But, yeah, thank you, James.
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for coming. If there's anything we can do, please, please let us know.
Absolutely. Will do.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, James. It's coming. See, James. All right, next item. Milk Community Use School Board opening. So we're going to do a vote tonight. On the agenda, there's, Melissa shared a folder that has the participants, sorry, the applicants who applied, and then the director's recommendation. Craig, do you want to say anything?
I've got any what?
Disappointment?
I do not have anything to say.
Okay, great. Has everybody read the recommendation from?
Yes, the director.
From the director, yeah. All right. Do I have a motion? Maybe one, want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'd like to motion based on the recommendation of the Community Use Director to appoint Taylor, is it Bodeo?
Bodeo.
Just wanted to make sure. Taylor Bodeo to the Community Use Board.
Do I second? Second by Derek? Any discussion?
Yeah, and again, quick discussion. I appreciate the other two applicants, you know, certainly, you know, it was nice to read through that, you know, what they had done in the past and why they would want to be on the board. So, appreciate their interest.
Okay, any other comments?
I would also second the, you know, thanks for applying and wanting to be involved. There's also other boards in town that they can be involved from, so if you're listening or anything, please look at, see what, how you can get involved.
Great. Derek? Yeah, I have seen, since I've been on school committee, I think this is one of the first times that we have actually multiple people apply. So I think this is fantastic, so the program's growing, and I thank everybody for being interested. All right. So, any other discussion? No? All in favor? Motion passes. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Taylor. All right. So, report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Michael. I actually, I wanted to have more of a discussion around e-bikes. For those of you that aren't aware, just last week, we had three students, one on Wednesday, one on Thursday, one on Friday, involved in an e-bike car accident. So three days in a row, before that, numerous incidents with e-bikes, cars, pedestrians. And so it's, it, I've talked to the chief about it. I've talked to our school resources officers about it, and we currently do not have any language in our handbooks regarding this. We don't have any policies regarding e-bikes, but it is becoming a safety hazard around town. What I can say is that during the school hours, e-bikes do not seem to be a problem, and they don't seem to be a problem on school grounds, I guess during the time that school's in session, but I haven't heard anything about coming to school on school grounds and leaving school grounds. So it seems to be later in the evening, kids are coming back to school and riding around on, on school property and other properties around town. But then also, students, or I don't want to say, I don't want to just say students, people that are using e-bikes, it's my understanding, my observation, and my understanding from talking with the chief, that they're not following the rules of the road. One thing that we, the chief and I have talked about is getting some education for our students and bringing police officer in to run just a forum, I guess, for, I think we did one for parents already at Woodland, having other forums for parents around in our schools, but then also having sessions for our students in assembly form. But I think then also breakout sessions if need be. We already have, I believe we had one at Woodland already, but as I talked to the chief, I want to get, I want to get them in every school, and I want to get them as quickly as possible into every school, so that at least we can start with some education for all of our, our students. But I also wanted to hear from all of you and see if any of you had suggestions on where you think we need to go as a school system regarding e-bikes. So I'm going to open it up to anybody on the committee.
Brendan?
I guess my first comment and question would be, are you aware of any other school districts that have a policy that we should implement?
Yeah.
Or that's even effective to implement? Because I mean, having a policy is one thing, but, you know, if there's no one there to enforce the policy, or how do you enforce it? It's not really much more than just a piece of paper. I think the education piece is incredibly important. Actually, on the U Center agenda for next week, we are also addressing this as well to reinforce it in the after-school program. So hopefully, they see it once in school, and then once again, or hopefully a couple times at the U Center as well. As someone who goes out and runs on a regular basis on the roads, I can tell you that- As someone who goes out and runs on a regular basis on the roads, um, I can tell you that anyone is a, is a hazard, uh, when they're not paying attention. That's both pedestrians, people on e-bikes and cars. If you look around town, if you're sitting at a traffic light, just watch, people have their heads down, they are on their phone. So I think it's actually a secondary part where the police department needs to kind of do some other enforcement as well of drivers. I think there's a, another component to all this, but, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, you have to be responsible for yourself. I assume when I run, no car can see me. I really do, because I just do not trust people at this point to make good decisions. And I'd rather protect myself than assume that someone is out there protecting me. Um, and I think that's really hard to instill on, you know, kids who don't quite understand some of the consequences that are out there. But I think, you know, the educational piece is really important. But on the other hand too, I think these e-bikes are potentially a really good solution for us where we have some kids who are two miles away from the high school. Where we have to walk every day and this is a great solution to get them here efficiently and effectively to help drive our, their intent attendance and their success in our, in our school. So, um, I think long-term planning, like if I could wave a magic wand, uh, we would actually talk with the highway department too. How do we build our streets and sidewalks better to accommodate pedestrians and cyclists and e-bikes? To be safe in their part of the road as well as, uh, drivers to be safe in their part of the road. So, um, if, if I could have like a grand master plan, Congress Street would have a dedicated bike lane. Um, that is barrier protected from cars and that bike lane would be perfect for e-bikes, people walking and so on and so forth. And then cars are nice and separated too. So I think that is a, a very big task for the town to take on, but if we could put it in a 10-year plan, it's something that would be really useful long-term. So, a lot of thoughts there. Any comments on that?
Yeah, and I, I think, um, you also touched on transportation, right? So, um, I think obviously one solution we could, we could, uh, we could come to would be to totally ban e-bikes from, from our schools, right? No e-bikes on the property. Problem with that is, you already pointed out, a number of students use it to get themselves to and from school, right? I was over at Stacy, uh, earlier this week, I can't remember, Monday or Tuesday, I counted the e-bikes. There was 22 e-bikes. However, there were probably more bicycles than e-bikes that were lined up. So well over 50 bikes, some e-bikes, some, some bicycles. So clearly, kids are using it to get them to and from school. We don't transport every kid, um, and so taking bicycles away from students creates a, a, a different challenge for us. I'll be curious to see what happens in the winter. Typically in the winter, we see bicycles go away. I don't remember last winter, I don't, I don't remember e-bikes, as many e-bikes certainly, um, that we have this year, I don't remember them last winter. So I don't, I think it's, I think the last spring is when we really started seeing e-bikes, um, just in more numbers, I guess. So I'll be curious to see if the e-bikes go away once the snow flies. Because then again, that's a different set of challenges because the roads get narrower and narrower as we get more snow, so. I think anything that we think of with banning bikes especially, we have to think of the other side, is how are we going to get kids to school then? So, thank you for bringing that up. I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll piggyback off of what Brendan said, like, that, that makes sense, um, but we are dealing with kids who have access to very fast e-bikes. At one point, there weren't any e-bikes and yet there was still a school, people still had to get to school. So it's hard to control that, and I think any, anything short-term, I'm not sure how that would work. It'd have to be long-term, like yourself, like a bike lane type of a set, situation. But these, these kids' brains, man, they're not fully developed, they're not going to make really great decisions. I know, I had a motorcycle at one point and I made better decisions. So, like, I get it, you know, I was just, I don't think there was as many accidents with, you know, pedal bikes as there are with e-bikes. So somehow they got to school in those two miles without an e-bike before. I believe they can do it again, but I'm, I'm open to, you know, suggestions.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, um, I think I've already brought this up in our future agenda that, you know, policy committees, you know, you guys are going to have to start looking at this. I think, yeah, one of the first aspects, as, as Craig alluded to, is just having the police come in and just teach base, basically kind of e-bike driver education. I think that's, you know, certainly going to be kind of one of the first steps. You know, no different than what we do for bus safety, right? We have bus drills and bus safety training drills there, so we're going to have to, uh, teach, teach students bike safety, e-bike safety with that. You know, I'm certainly not looking to outlaw, I think, you know, both of you just also said that we're, it is a good mode of transportation. You know, we may not agree with that style of mode of transportation, but it is a mode of transportation, getting students here, it's, it's here. So to outlaw it altogether, I don't think is a, to me, a good idea, even though I know other school systems have. But to me, maybe it might be walking the, these e-bikes on property. Right, you know, my, my fear is we, we've seen accidents occur in town on, not on school property. But to me, it's only a matter of time before something happens on school property, right? You know, you're saying that there are, there are 20 e-bikes at Stacy, I know one day I counted a dozen out front here at, at the high school and they're growing in popularity. So growing in popularity increases the numbers that are out there is only going to increase the percentage chance of an accident. So to me, probably a policy that has some sort of zones that when you get into the zone, you start walking the, the e-bikes. And I think I, a, a policy that is, you know, just says no e-bikes on, on property and administration teams are going to have to outline where those designated areas are because they'll know their schools best. You know, it's, again, just trying to get ahead of it before we have an accident on a school. And then to answer your question quickly or to kind of respond, the comprehensive plan, we looked at bike paths in town and it was something that was, that was discussed with planning board and it just unfortunately, just the, the street makeup. It was, it became, um, too, it was too restrictive, we couldn't do it, unfortunately.
Logistics are.
And yeah, logistics, so it would say in Main Street, you would, you would have to remove parking.
Yeah, you can't do Main Street.
All on the side of Main Street to have it, you know, and as you could tell. Congress Street, yeah, it's.
Cause that cuts all the schools.
The requirements, you're right, the requirements of your width are very specific by the state, so when you start putting bike lanes in, it just, we, we wouldn't be conforming. So unfortunately, we're up against those types of restrictions, so.
For sure.
So I, and I think one other thing that, that I guess consider, I, I was talking to the chief, I was talking about this too. Is where we're restricting the use of bikes, e-bikes in a number of places, um, specifically on the backfields. I think we have a sign over here on the turf complex, doesn't mean that we don't see them there, they're there, but they're there with less frequency now. Uh, over at Woodland, we have some signs up. I believe, I can't remember, uh, honestly, I thought that he said that they, they were legal on the bike path. But I think they're.
We passed it by law a few years ago.
Yeah, but it was like up to a certain miles per hour.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Might be like class ones and twos.
But potentially that could be, they could be something looked at to, that that may go away. The problem with like, the problem with restricting it in all these places is that leaves the kids nowhere to go but the streets, right? Like, there's no, I, we still need to find safe places for them to, to ride the bikes. Because I don't want to just push them out into the street because then we're going to have bigger challenges than we have. I'm, I'm here often at night and I see kids riding around the schools in the parking lots. I'm not sure that's the safest place for them either. But it gets them out of the street too. So, there's got to be a balance between finding safe ways for them to ride, um, and then also, I guess, um, yeah, just find safe places for them to ride, but then also having some restriction of place.
My two cents, um, I think, uh, walking them on campus. I think that's where I, I, I don't like the idea of banning, uh, personally, I, if it gets kids to schools, then I think that's a really good thing, right? And, uh, I think, you know, the solution is saying, hey, you just kind of walk them on campus. You know, I thought about maybe saying, uh, no power, but to force that would be like really difficult, but I think you just simply, you know, you walk them on campus. Um, and two, I thought, um, I, um, had, Kristen sent me some pictures of the, the bikes in, in high school. Can we get some storage for them, like bike racks, like sooner than later, because they're kind of a mess? And also like, again, you know, I think we, we want to start to, to encourage, um, the kids to get to school, but, you know, there's, there's, there's at least 20 or, 20 or so bikes.
I was out there today, they're over here.
Yeah, 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 it'd be nice to have just some bike racks or something, uh, at, at the schools. But yeah, my two cents, I think, you know, maybe walk them on campus, we start there and then obviously we can change things as it goes and then, you know, the principals would have, you know, their authority to do discipline as needed.
The area with the bike racks is, does that have to be as close to the school or could that be like, as soon as you get on school property, is that a designated area you put it there? And then you have to walk?
Yeah, so, I think, I think, um, one thing I noticed with the bikes, um, many of them are blocked or chained up to anything, they're just there.
None, yeah.
So, um, I think with e-bikes, you need some kind of key or something to get the thing actually moving, but I mean, you can still pick it up, I think.
Exactly, yeah. They're heavy.
They are.
I think that's one reason why they, we keep them close to the, the buildings is people actually have to come on campus and it's not as easy.
Right.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks. Great.
More to come, I guess.
So, uh, yeah, let's move on. So the reporter, the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning.
Sure. Thank you. So I'm here tonight to share kind of an overview of our official accountability data for, um, Milford Public Schools. Um, and then I will also talk about math specifically. So we'll start with, um, what is the accountability report that we received from DUCY? And so the accountability report that we receive is how DUCY tells us whether or not we are meeting their defined performance targets. And they define the report, um, the performance targets in five ways. One is around achievement of MCAS in ELA, math and science. One is around growth of ELA and sci, and math, because kids don't take science. Every year, we don't get growth scores, um, for science. High school completion, um, meaning dropout rates, um, and attainment, um, information. And then progress towards, um, English language proficiency on the access standardized assessments, that's about our English language learners. Um, and then additional indicators in terms of chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework completion at the high school level. And so I want to be clear that these, these are the only five metrics that this entire report is kind of being based on, right? And so I think there's a lot of things that are missing here. I also think that there is no voice, um, or no data from Brookside or Memorial or Shining Star being present. So the way DUCY is kind of rating Milford or giving us an accountability report is really based on our 312 performance on these five indicators. When you look at the report, um, at the top of the report, um, and this is all publicly available on our school profiles, but DUCY, um, has some maintenance right now between 5:30 PM and 9:30 PM, so everybody will be able to access this, um, but here are some screenshots, um, for us. So at the top of the report, it kind of tells us right off the bat that we are not requiring assistance or intervention, we've ma, we're making moderate progress towards our goals. We have 49% moderate progress towards our goals, but I think it's important to call out, um, how we did in 2025. So in 2025, we have 54% progress, which is up from 41% progress in 2024, right? So they, they have a calculated weight of 2025 being 60% and 2024 being 40%. So we're, I would argue, making more progress than the 49% rating from, based on last year's, um, data here. So I think that's important to, to call out. They get this 54% number, um, by giving us scores, um, on those different indicators and different pieces in terms of whether or not we're meeting, partially meeting or not meeting kind of targets that they sent to us based on the previous year's data. So when we look at that, um, you can see a breakdown of what they are exactly looking for for achievement, what they're looking for for growth, what they're looking for for high school completion, that progress towards attaining English language proficiency, and then our other indicators. Everything is worth four points. You either get zero points because you declined, one point because you kind of stayed steady and there was no change, two points because you improved, but it was below kind of where we want it to be. Three points if you were meeting their target, um, and four points, um, exceeding the target. So just so you understand what you're looking at, I'm just going to really quickly talk through, I'm looking at the achievement. Um, I'm looking at all students column, and so in English language arts achievement, right? That's based on the scaled score of MCAS last year in grades three through eight and 10. We got one point out of four, which means basically we stayed flat across English language arts. In math, we got a two out of four, which means we improved, but it was below the, the target. Um, and in science, we also improved but below the target and that's where we're getting our five out of 12 points, which counts towards 60% of our, um, column of all students, right? And so you can kind of look here and see where our, kind of our glows and where our grows. So I, what I want to call out to you is I think that there's two major things that we should be celebrating. One is around when we look at our lowest performing students in our 3-8. We're, we're exceeding targets in ELA achievement and mathematics achievement, right? So we got four points out of four points there for our lowest performing student. So, um, this tells us that those students are, are exceeding expectations in terms of their targets, right? It does not mean that they are necessarily exceeding expectations as a score on the MCAS, but they're exceeding expectations of the target. The other thing that I think is a huge piece that we should be celebrating is around our English language proficiency for our elementary or, or, um, grades three, eight students, um, based on access. Again, those students are exceeding their targets from last year. When we look at some of our areas of growth, um, or decline that we need to kind of dig into and really unpack together, it is around high school achievement, right? We saw a decline. I can tell you that like, some of the questions there is around that this is the first year where MCAS was not a competency determination. And so, did that impact how our high school students took the MCAS? And as a result, did we see achievement decrease? The other thing I think we need to be looking at is the fact that our extended engagement rate and our annual dropout rate also kind of declined here, right? So we saw an increase in dropout rate, um, and we saw an increase in, um, our students that are staying with us past, um, four years, the cohort graduation rate.
What's extended engagement rate?
It is the kids that are here past the four-year cohort.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so five years.
Five years. Everything here is public. The other thing that's like, if you want to dig into the data, that you can dig into when you go to the DUCY, um, profile, is you can look at each of these indicators in more detail. They will break it down by subgroup, they will break it down by school, they will break it down, um, just with more details of what exactly the English language arts achievement was, what was that scaled score in 2024 versus 2025? So you can really get into kind of like the, the details here. But this is kind of a big picture of where we are, um, from the view of DUCY, um, in terms of our accountability report from last year. So I will pause there and see if there's any questions before I talk specifically about math.
Quick question, when you say target, how, what is the target and how are they set?
They give it to us and it's based on what the, we did the previous year. So they will, um, if your scaled score average was a 480, they will set a target of a scaled score of 490, say, and those are not exact numbers.
Yeah, is there some sort of percentage or some, some very complicated?
I think it's a complicated formula.
Formula, okay.
My understanding is DUCY isn't very transparent about where their numbers come from.
So, uh, it's not in this, I didn't see your other report.
We don't know, but it's, it's set by the state. We have, we have no control, is what.
So they put us on a, it's on a different report that we can't get to, uh, right now because it's down.
Yeah.
There's, there's, they put us on a track, um, for the number that we were at, um, pre-COVID, right? They put you on a track from whatever it was, 2021, to get back to that number. And they like step it up every year and that's the, the target. It gets readjusted though every year. So like, say it's, exactly, say we're six points away, they may put us at two points the, uh, next year that you have to try to get to.
Okay.
All right, if you get beyond that, then you get the, the four. All right, if you get beyond that, then you get the, the four points.
Right.
If you meet it, you're at three and so on and so forth.
But it's really also like, there's a goal, right, of where we want to get to, but they, it's also based on the previous year's
Yeah.
data, right? So twenty twenty-four is important when we're looking at twenty twenty-five, because you're really comparing to what we did in twenty twenty-four.
Very good. So those goals change every year as the previous year?
Yes.
So the target's always moving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? There, no, okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to dive into math a little bit, um, on both the accountability data, but then just kind of where we are. Um, giving you a report of what's going on in the math department. Um, I want to, because I just talked about accountability data, I want to dive into the accountability data for math. So I think it's important for, when we talk about math, for you to kind of know where we are in the adoption of the high-quality instructional material for illustrative mathematics, right? So the school year that we just finished, Woodland was finishing year three of implementing IM. Stacy was finishing year two of implementing IM, and the high school was finishing the first year of Algebra I. Okay, so when we look at kind of the change from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, it's important to know kind of where each school was to, to understand that change piece, right? So I think it's really a huge, we know we were going to take a dip, right? And we took a dip in year one and year two when we look at Woodlands and we look at Stacy in terms of accountability data on math achievement and math growth here, right? And, and we're seeing a huge kind of change, right? We saw a decline in SY twenty-four, and we're seeing, yes, we are not improving to where we want to improve because we're not meeting the target, um, but we did make a change there, um, of a one-point-one scaled score points. I think what's really important is that we know that growth is going to come before achievement, right? And so the fact that we're seeing our mathematics growth for our three-eight students shift from an SGP of forty-three point two, which is on the low end of average growth to a fifty-two, um, SGP in SY twenty-five, like that's a huge jump that we need to be celebrating, right? And again, growth is going to happen before achievement happens. So the fact that we're growing nine SGP points on average, and we're also growing one-point-one scaled score points on average across three-eight, I would take as a win and I would take as like, the IM program is making a difference for our kids. When we look at Stacy, I mean, when we look at the high school and we look at grade ten, I, I debated putting this data in here, because the thing about this data is that the kids that took the grade-ten test actually have never sat in an IM classroom. Because the grade-nine students or the Algebra I students were who were getting IM in Algebra I and SY twenty-five. So the data for grade-ten reflects kids that have never had a high-quality math instructional program, and we're seeing a dip. So are we seeing a dip because they haven't had a high-quality instructional math program? And now it's not a competency determination? So the amount of effort that they're putting in when they become grade-ten students is something that a lot of high schools are kind of starting to, to happen, because we did see a dip kind of across the state in grade-ten testing. I want to dive into each of the schools a little bit more, just so that you can kind of see historically where we've been. So at Woodlands, right, it was year three of implementing IM last year. Um, thirty-one percent of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, which was an increase from the previous year of one point, one percentage point, right? And our SGP was a fifty-eight, sixty is where we start to get high SGP. And so they went up three points, and I think that that's a huge shift for the kids in Woodlands and is a huge win. The other thing you will notice is that this bar at the top here are our students that are exceeding expectations that increased. And our students that are not meeting expectation has stayed steady. What I really would like to see is I really would like to see this bar here decrease, right? We want less kids to not, not be meeting expectations. Um, so we want to see that push from the red into the gray and the gray into the light blue, um, as we kind of go. We are also back to a level of where we were prior to implementing IM, right? So prior to implementing IM would have been SY twenty-two. And SY twenty-two, thirty-one percent of our students were meeting expectations. So after year three of implementing, we're seeing, we're back to there, and we would expect that we continue to kind of grow. Um, I said three years ago that it takes five years to implement a program, so year three being back to where we started makes sense, um, in terms of the research. So what is Woodland doing this year? Um, Woodland is, is kind of focusing on two things. Um, we've talked about a little bit of a fishbowl classroom that I had done at Memorial. Um, we have a fishbowl classroom happening in grade four this year, um, with our math specialist and a grade-four teacher. Um, that's the intense lesson planning, um, observations and debrief and really coaching for that teacher. Um, the goal there is that we're able to then get other teachers into the classroom to really see like, what does this high-quality instruction look like when we are implementing IM, um, with integrity? Um, grade four and grade five also have a lot of math department time, which is great. Um, they're diving into the standards, unpacking the standards, and really thinking about how are, how am I teaching the standards through this material, right? Now that I, I have three years under my belt, how can I kind of meet the needs of our kids? Um, but staying true to the standards and not changing the standards piece of things. Grade three is, is implementing exponential learning, so we're kind of letting them do literacy right now, and we will bring math in, um, back in when they, when they're ready for it. At Stacy Middle School, um, we saw a, a huge drop, um, last year in year one of implementing, and we are seeing a huge rebound. Um, and so we are seeing a four percent increase in students meeting and exceeding expectations compared to last year. Um, you will see in this graph like a big cut of dip, that's year one of implementing, and we're seeing a rebound of, of four percent, but here's your SGP going up twelve percent, twelve points, which is huge, um, for them to do. I also will name for you that, um, the kids that are not meeting expectations is the kids that are not meeting expectations has also shrunk, right? So although we didn't see that change, um, at Woodland, we are seeing that change here, um, at Stacy. At Stacy, we have a partnership this year with West Ed Research Teaching Lab Consultants and Assistants. Um, and they are actually receiving, um, we have five teachers in grade six and grade seven who have opted into this opportunity. Um, and they are receiving weekly coaching and debrief support, um, from the consultant um, with some intense lesson planning and unit planning, um, support. So I expect to see this continue, um, to increase and continue to grow. Um, at the high school, I'm not going to dive too much into this, um, because this data is not representing the high-quality instructional material. Um, we are in Algebra I, we are continuing that implementation in year two. They are focusing on assessments and amplifying the assessments to align more to the language of MCAS and also have level one and level two, um, assessments where we are not lowering the cognitive demands of the math, but we're really amplifying the language. And then we are rolling out geometry, um, is in year one. And so the, the kids that sit for MCAS this year will have had one year of IM through a geometry program. Um, so the data will be, will be interesting, but that's really, I would say, the first year one of math data for MCAS that we will be able to see. Um, and the high school or myself will be coming back asking for money to, um, adopt Algebra II, um, because we had to do a slow rollout at the high school, um, this past three years. Um, we can't think about, we can't forget about Brookside and, um, Memorial, so I pulled iReady data to kind of show you kind of where we are with student outcomes. Um, I will talk you through what this means, but this is the end-of-year Brookside iReady math data. Thirty percent of our students last year were mid or above grade level, which is the equivalent to proficiency, right? That is a one percent decrease compared to the year before. Um, five percent of our students were two grade levels below. That's a one percent decrease from the year before. That's, we want a decrease there, right? We want less kids to be in the red or less kids to be two grade levels below. This is the typical growth, so it's the median typical growth, so a little bit different than MCAS because MCAS is average. iReady is median, so the middle number, so nobody on the high end or the low end is skewing the data, right? Because we're picking the kid in the middle. So we had a ninety-four percent typical growth. Think about this as like one year's worth of input, we want to see a hundred percent output. So a little bit lower growth than we would kind of want, but it's up thirteen percent from the year before. So that's, that's a huge shift, um, in a median, and it take, it takes more to shift a median than it does a mean. Um, because a mean can be skewed by some of the outliers. Brookside, we're really not pushing anything IM-specific right now. They're, they're taking on exponential learning, they need the time to take on exponential learning and kind of really focus on literacy. We are thinking about how are some of the literacy instructional practices also in the math classroom and, and what is that connection there? Um, but there's no math-specific professional development or push right now. And then the last one we have here is Memorial. Um, Memorial, you will see huge improvements, um, and huge gains. So at the end of last year, thirty-eight percent of their students were proficient. Um, that is a five percent increase from the year before. When we look at kids that are two grade levels below, we have four percent of the students there, that is a four percent decrease, which is a good thing from the year before. Their median was a hundred and nine percent, um, and that's up fifteen percent, right? I, I will, I will tell you that I really believe that some of this strong data is because of those three fishbowl classrooms um, that existed at Memorial, that did not exist at Brookside or any of the other buildings, right? Um, so what are we doing there, right? So there's momentum happening here. Um, we also have three teacher leaders that we can capitalize on, um, the work that they put in last year. Um, they are leading grade-level TCTs, um, with their peers. Um, they've received a lot of professional development this summer, um, and into this fall around like, how do I be a teacher facilitator and what does that look like when I'm trying to guide my peers, um, to make some shifts in their practice? Um, and they're really focused on warm-ups. So the very beginning of an IM lesson is always a warm-up, and they're focused on different warm-up routines, and they have a cycle that they will go through with their colleagues of planning, of teaching them something about the warm-up, and then they'll come back the next week to do a planning session. Um, we also have the L staff co-teach in our IM classrooms at Memorial. Um, and so the L teachers will be working on developing their understanding of mathematical language routines, um, which come out of, uh, Stanford. Those are built into the illustrative math program. We have never really given explicit professional development around those instructional routines. So the L teachers in their TCT will be getting that explicit, um, professional development um, through the L coordinator in partnership with the fishbowl teachers that are taking a big teacher leadership. When we think about collective efficacy, I think that this is a really strong example of teachers owning the professional development time. Um, we invested a lot in those three teachers, and they are now ready, um, and confident to kind of do this work with their colleagues. Um, and it takes, it takes a lot to run a professional development session, and they're excited for it. Um, so I'm excited for them. The first one is, um, tomorrow. And they were here from three-thirty to four-thirty, kind of like practicing with each other, um, and giving each other feedback on what they're going to do. Um, my big message on kind of sharing the MCAS scores and the iReady scores is, is the shifts that we've seen in this data is all based on student outcomes, right? We have learning walk data that we can share that show the instructional practices shifts, but at the end of the day, it really comes down to the different student data that we have to kind of show the shifts. Um, and I'm excited for this. Um, but I also think it takes a huge investment in the teachers to provide the planning time, the coaching time, the feedback time, so that they can continue to kind of grow their craft. Um, and so there's a lot that's still happening, and I guess I'm just saying that because I'm wearing both hats right, right now, um, but it's really important that like, the curriculum supervisor of math role is continued to kind of be supported financially, um, because I think that these outcomes are because of that support that we've been able to put into place. Um, but it's all going to continue this year as well. Questions about what's happening in the math world?
Chris, my sir?
Yeah, just quickly, again, thank you very much for presenting everything. Certainly, uh, it, it tells the story, which is great and, and kind of easy from, from my side to, to be able to decipher. And I know this question's probably been asked and answered, but why in year one, eh, do we see the dip?
Because your teachers don't fully understand what they're, they're, they're reading a script, right? For lack of a better word, for the first time, right? And they're trying something different, so they're not comfortable. The kids are being asked just to, um, it's more student-centered. It's less teacher standing at the board and drilling and killing and memorizing equations. I think we see a dip because kids are used to memorizing, and then they're able to regurgitate. Um, and this, this program is not a memorization-regurgitation, um, type of thing. And so it is, it is a different way of learning.
Got you.
And so I would say we should see the dip in literacy too, right? Like, I, the, the data just says we see an implementation dip.
Yeah, like you said, it's a five-year, you know, that, it's a five-year trend that you're, you were hoping to see and as you're showing with, with Woodland, they had the year-one dip, and then two and three are, are getting there, and three being back to the standards from the previous style, so, yeah. But again, it just, I'm sure anybody that's, that's listening like, well, well, wait a minute, there's a dip. Like, why, why would we change it only to have to wait another couple, two to four years for a, to see a change? But change is coming, and you said, like you said, it's a different style where the outcome will benefit the student.
Yeah, I also think it's going to be really interesting to look at, like, the kid that we implemented IM with in year one, who was in third grade, didn't have IM at the K-two level, right? So they're, it's not that they didn't get the standards, it's just that they got the standards in maybe a different style, right? And so the prerequisite ideas that IM assumes in grade three, those kids don't necessarily have. So now I'm a third-grade teacher, I'm trying to teach this new program. My kids don't understand the program, I don't understand the program, and I'm just trying to like, survive and kind of make it through the first year. What's interesting is this year, the kids that got it in kindergarten are our current third-grade students. They'll sit for MCAS. So we'll actually have MCAS data now to kind of show where we, um, ended up, right? And so like, Memorial, the fact that Memorial went up this much is huge, because all of these kids have had IM from the beginning, if they were in Milford Public Schools.
Correct.
Um, Brookside, we need to see an increase there. We didn't invest as much time and energy in the teaching and learning of math at Brookside as we did at Memorial. They're just, there was no way for me to do both at the level of intensity that both needed to happen. I believe that if we were able to provide the fishbowl type of experience to all of our teachers, we would see the increase faster. I'm hopeful that at Stacy, the Teaching Lab Partnership, the West Ed Partnership, and the Assistance Partnership with those five teachers, we will see a big gain and change.
Awesome, great, thank you. All good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's encouraging to, um, to see the trends heading in the right direction. Obviously, the dips, uh, like you ta- said about the, uh, high school, the first year in the high school, there's a, there, there is a learning curve. Um, so FY twenty-six, or SY twenty-six will be, uh, another marker to see where we're actually at. Um, but it's nice to see that the intentionality that you've had on Memorial has produced such good results. And if that can spread, there's no doubt that that's going to also help everybody else, so, um, thank you, very, very well done.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Um, I have an odd question. Do you think the new literacy curriculum will also translate to additional performance benefits with the math? Only because I think of like, back to SATs, where you have like a paragraph to read through for a math problem. And I don't know if that's changed since I've gone to school, so I guess it's a two-part question.
Yeah, so I think, I think there's two answers to that question. I think we're bringing in a, a knowledge-building curriculum, right? And so the purpose of the knowledge-building curriculum is that they, they spend a lot of time on one kind of subject. I believe kindergarten starts with like toys and tools, right? And they're unpacking toys and tools. Well, IM first unit is about the tools that you use in the math classroom. So there's definitely a lot of connections there. And so I think as we build, build kids' background knowledge, they're now able to unpack these word problems more, because they have some understanding of what the word problem is talking about, right? Um, that only works if the knowledge-building curriculum's content that they're teaching or knowledge that they're teaching is also in IM. I don't know how much there is or isn't overlap there. However, I will say like, exponential learning knowledge topics are not random out of nowhere that we're choosing, right? It's a research-based, it was chosen, it's high-quality curriculum. It, um, it does kind of like build the topics over years as well. So like, they'll learn tools and toys in unit one or modular one of kindergarten, and it'll come back in first grade and second grade, so they're continuing to build that knowledge. Um, what's interesting about a knowledge-building curriculum is it, when we think about an MCAS and they have to read a passage, if in the knowledge-building curriculum they had that topic, then they're going to do great on that paragraph, right? Or that reading excerpt. If they haven't had that topic, we're back to kind of square one.
Sure.
But if we don't build the knowledge, right? If you read something that you don't have any clue about, it's just words on a page, you don't have any sense-making happening. So we're, then the purpose of the knowledge-building curriculum is really so that we can start to build some background knowledge, which is only one piece of- which is only one piece of that literacy rope. We have to think about the other pieces as well and give them the tools. The other piece of this is, in the IM curriculum, one of the mathematical language routines is around something called the Three Reads Protocol. And that protocol ties really nicely to what they do in knowledge-building, where it's about like, you read the story problem with no numbers, and you ask the kids, what's the story about, right? And so you're starting to get kids to problem-solve without figuring out, oh, I have to do this to get an answer. Because they don't read with numbers where they can then automatically like just plug it into an equation, right? And so I do think that there will definitely be some connections there that can happen, yeah.
Thank you.
I have some questions. So, the implementation dip, which makes sense. What are we doing to help reduce that stress for the teacher learning their, you know, new, new system as well as the kids?
I think it's a lot of like patience and grace. I'm giving you patience and grace. I know this is hard, I know that this is overwhelming. What could I do to sit down next to you to kind of like work through this together? I think our instructional coaches at our K-eight level is taking a lot of that. I think it's also teaching them that like, if you are behind in pacing, that's one of the biggest stressors, right? That's one of the biggest stressors in the math. That's one of the biggest stressors in the EL, the exponential learning adoption is this like worry that like, I gotta get to this point by this day and time, right? I think the more we can show teachers that like, we are being flexible with them, and if we don't get to that deadline, then we don't get to that deadline. Like, let's make decisions together on how we're going to make those adjustments. So it's being human. It's telling them that we know that these are the emotions that you're feeling and recognizing those emotions that they're feeling. And then also trying to hold the bar of like, we need you to implement this high-quality instructional program. We're not, this is not going away, right? I think, I think, Chris, you alluded to this a little bit. I think what some districts do wrong is they bring in a program, and they're like, it didn't work, and they throw it away after a year. And it's like, then we're just putting a different program every year in the hands of teachers, and we don't know if it actually worked or it didn't work. So that's more stressful than like trying to work through the problems. I think we're at a point now in math where like, we, yes, we have the student outcome data. We have to, we have to evaluate this further. Is this actually the program, right? We've been implementing it for year four, we're spending a lot of money on it. Is this the program we're staying with for the next four or five years? Or like, or is this not the right program, right? And so I think sticking with it and also just being a human being of like, I know, this is not easy, I'm asking you to do something that's different, and recognizing that.
Sure, thanks. I did have another question, so this is great. How is this going to influence the budget? Because we're entering budget season, and you mentioned, you know, sitting down and you can only do so much at one school to accelerate things. It sounds like we need some more resources or shifting of things, so...
So curriculum-wise, like programmatic-wise, right? K-algebra, no, K-geometry is built into the local budget already, right? So math budget lines at individual schools already have incorporated IM. So we're good in terms of K-geometry. We're not asking for new initiatives, we're not asking for new materials or buys. We will be asking for a new materials initiative around adopting Algebra II. So that will definitely be an ask kind of coming forward. You know, Michael, I don't know the answer to that, to be a hundred percent honest with you. I think, I think our instructional coaches are sometimes pulled really thin, right? They're trying to do everything in a building. Is it more coaching support that we need? Is it consulting support that we need? Is it teacher leadership that we need? I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure about it. I don't feel like I did anything out of this world at Memorial. I sat with the teacher, I gave them time, I lesson-planned, I was in their room, I debriefed. But I can also tell you that I probably spent sixteen to eighteen hours a week with two teachers at Memorial, right? So like the time-intensive, but now I don't have to be there. So I don't know what that, that ask is.
Great. And then lastly, you know, showing the data, you know, I know on the committee we've talked about this over years. And, you know, when you're a parent and you get iReady, and there's no explanation from the school or a teacher, it can get very frustrating and challenging. I know I personally went through that. And so how are we going to do it better this year so that when the parents do get this information, there is, there is a path or they at least understand it a bit better?
Tell me more about what they don't understand.
Yeah, so like, for instance, and this came up by multiple members where we'll have kids in the system, and you get your iReady, and it shows that, you know, your student might be, you know, behind somewhere, right? A certain percentile, or maybe even decreasing, right? But then, you know, you see this, and you get it, and it's just a piece of paper. You're like, oh, this is interesting. But then you talk to the teacher, the teacher's like, hell, everything's fine, it'll be great, right? And this has happened over multiple years by multiple committee members, and we've been asking like, how are we going to reconcile? Like, do we trust the iReady report, which is good, you know, it's good data? And then we have the school saying, everything's going to be good. And it might be. But again, it's very disjointed when you get it coming home with no information with the scoring. So just some feedback there, it's come up every year.
Yeah. I had a conversation earlier today. We had a math committee meeting, and they were meeting in buildings. Right, Memorial was doing their Fishbowl stuff, Brookside was, Brookside was talking about the reports. And, Michael, I'm going to say this because I think it's important for the community to understand this, is like, at the beginning of the year, right? When a kid is in the yellow, right? They're one grade level behind, but they're a beginning of second grade. Well, if I'm one year grade level behind, I'm scoring in the first grade. I should be scoring in the first grade because I haven't learned anything in the second grade yet, right? So like, as a, as a parent, as an educator, I'm actually not concerned that they are one grade level behind because it's the beginning of second grade and they're in first grade. That makes sense, right? I don't, that's really hard to wrap your head around. This data, right, at the end of the year, with forty-one percent of our kids that are one grade level behind, I'm concerned. Because now I'm talking about a kid that's at the end of second grade, or supposed to be at the end of second grade, and is scoring in the first grade. So now there's actually this like gap. So what I'm hearing you say is like, that understanding is not necessarily had by our parents. And it's a conversation I had with our educators today that they're still wrapping their head around. So some type of something to really explain that and make sure parents understand that as well. And then what do I do when my kid is two grade levels below in a specific domain?
Last question on that one. And there's this letter that gets sent out, you know, if your student drops below a certain level.
For literacy?
I think so. It's a standard letter.
Yeah, it's a dyslexia guidance from the state.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I know like two years ago, it was sent out, like, it was, it's a very bland letter. And I know last year, we had one of our members got the letter after school ended, right? And so it was frustrating where it's like, you know, again, disjointed communication, and then there's no path on what to do next, right? So if we could do better than, that'd be great, I think.
Yeah, so what you're talking about is the dyslexia guidance from DESI, right? Which is a...
Screener.
Screener that we have to, we have to have a tool that screens kids for dyslexia in grades K through three. So the letter will go home with the iReady reports in January, and then potentially again at the end of the school year. We have moved up the iReady window this year to make sure that we have time to get the iReady test results done, get the family letters printed, to get the dyslexia letter written, to then get it out to teachers, to families before the end of the school year. So we do have a plan, or hopefully a timeline that's going to work in terms of time there. But I'm also hearing you say like, there's no personal information in that letter that's actually helping me.
It's a standard, I mean, it's very state, and it doesn't really help you as a parent. You're like, okay, great, now what do I do?
Yeah.
Right, so anyways, just some constructive feedback there.
We have one more question. Is there any additional focus or plan in place for those students in the high school that have not had that before and like, just more intensive? Obviously, their timeframe is a lot shorter than the younger, younger kids.
Yeah, you're talking about like our...
Tenth grade and...
So it would be our current, anybody who's in Algebra II or above do not have IM, does not have IM. Yeah, we, the Algebra II team actually, at the high school, now that we have IM running in Algebra I and running in Geometry, we made a really specific scheduling change this year where like, the teachers that were teaching Algebra I were not also teaching Geometry. Were not also teaching Algebra II. So we actually have content teams this year. The Algebra II content team met, I believe, on Tuesday because they're now doing most of their department meetings by content team. And they're looking at, how do I pull some of these units of IM that are free and open into my Algebra II curriculum so that I can start to get used to it and also provide that to our kids? Our lessons, our scope and sequence are still all grounded in the Massachusetts frameworks. They're still standards-based. They just have always kind of been teacher-homegrown material, right? Which, teachers have a really hard job of being pedagogical experts and content experts, and they can't also be content design experts, right? And so asking teachers to do all three of those is really hard, which is why DESI a few years ago, or five, ten years ago at this point, made a push for high-quality instructional material because they believe that teachers need to focus on the pedagogy and the content instead of the design. So how do we, how do we encourage those teachers from Algebra II up to be using the materials that are free and online? And they're starting to work towards that this year.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Good? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Report of the super, school business administrator.
Thank you. I'd like to bring forward a declaration of a school-owned vehicle. This vehicle was purchased two, three years ago, and unfortunately got into an incident, and it was not repairable. So it has been parking in, stored in the RJM garage. Right now, we just want to remove it and declare it as a surplus.
Any questions?
No. I'm guessing it's been declared as a total loss. Yes, okay, great.
All motion to declare a surplus?
Brendan, motion, second motion? Second by Derek. All in favor? Unanimous, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And then next is the inform, just informational personnel, personnel update.
Quick question on the personnel update.
Sure.
Do we ever include if we hire anybody for contractual services?
Contractual services, like stipend? Oh.
Not necessarily stipends, but if...
Like from an outside vendor?
Correct.
No, they're not our employees. If they're not in our employees, we don't report them here.
So what?
Contract, contract, give me an example.
Trying to think, so I know like, if you say in the springtime, special education department needs to bring in someone for outside testing over a long-term period of time.
Okay.
Because of, yeah.
What about a different language?
Or, yeah, for a different language. So anything like that, so anybody that's, that's here, not necessarily for like, in a sense, a one day, but over maybe a period of time. I just wasn't sure if we, if that was ever tracked in here or not, so...
In that case, I can't think about an example. It would be paid out of the warrant as invoices coming monthly, if that's the case. But they're not our employees.
Right, yeah. Or even, yeah, I don't know if we've done any contractual services for IM, you know, to bring people in to help. Again, just more, very, very basic and generic.
Staff augmentation, but through an outside vendor.
It just wouldn't show up in a list like this.
Yeah.
It'd show up on, like you said, POs or invoices.
Okay.
And maybe I'm not answering your question completely, but like, it's in grants, right? So like, the way we get the Teaching Lab Partnership is through a grant.
Okay.
And then you know you have a consultant as a part of that grant.
But depending on the grant, so some grants, some grants, we don't actually get the money. The money, we win the grant, and the money goes from DESI to the vendor.
Vendor.
In other cases, we get the money, but it's already allocated to a vendor.
Okay.
I don't know. Makes sense?
It does, yeah. Like you said, I just wasn't sure when we look at, when we look at personnel.
You talked about something else, though, which is different, like, like special ed.
Yeah.
If we have other testing that has to be done, it all goes through the special ed department.
Right.
Like, like Wen said, whoever did the testing is going to submit an invoice, and then it gets paid that way, it wouldn't show up on a list like this.
Wouldn't show up, okay.
Thank you. Great, consent agenda. So we have a warrant for one million, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and two eighty dollars and eighty-five cents, and September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes, and then a professional development update. Does anybody want to pull anything from it, or are we good to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chris, second by Brendan, all in favor?
All good.
Motion passes, it's unanimous. Any subcommittee updates?
I already heard the, well, it's not, never mind.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I mean, school building committee met last night, but you got the update today from James.
Yeah, we got that. All right. Any future agenda items? Motion to adjourn.
Policy, policy, policy.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Derek, second by Brendan, all in favor?
Good to go.
Unanimous. Thank you. We're off to...